Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Small Business. At this time, can everybody please silence your cell phones? If you wish to testify, please go up to the Sarge Arms desk to fill out a testimony slip. Written testimony can be emailed to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach the dais. I repeat, no one is to approach the dais. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. Great to be here with you today. I am Councilmember Oswald Feliz, Chair of the Committee on Small Business. This is my first hearing as Chair of this committee, and so I want to begin by thanking Speaker Adrian Adams for trusting me to chair this important committee. Small businesses are key contributors to the greatness and diversity of the City of New York, and it's a privilege to support them in my new role. Small businesses are the heart of our local economy. They create so many jobs for local residents. They also work so hard to keep communities vibrant, and of course, they work very hard to support their families. Thank you all for joining today's hearing on how the Department of Small Business Services can encourage successful and diverse business improvement districts throughout the city. I'd also like to thank my City Council colleagues, representatives from the administration, and the public for being here. I would also like to acknowledge my colleague, Councilmember Palladino, who has joined us today. Business Improvement Districts, also known as BIDS, are local business associations that work together to provide enhanced services and provide economic growth within neighborhoods to the benefit of all members and to the benefit of all businesses. BIDS have been making positive contributions to their communities in the City of New York since 1982, when the laws enabling bid formation were first adopted. Today, the city is home to about seventy-five, seventy-six bids located across all five boroughs. In recognition of that, of the role that bids play in funding resources and improvements to their local communities, the Department of Small Business Services provides logistical support and oversight to help these organizations form and grow. At the same time, it is important to recognize certain challenges and inequities in the opportunities and resources available to different bids and commercial corridors in the city. When this committee last examined the issue in 2018, six years ago, bids offered testimony on a number of areas where the city could improve its programming, including strengthening support for micro businesses and the smaller bids, also enhancing citywide management of public space, and of course, facilitation, facilitating coordination and transparency across the numerous agencies that bids work with on a regular basis. These are considerations that remain relevant today. Yet, at the same time, small businesses are also facing new challenges as the city continues to recover and adapt in a post-pandemic world. In today's hearing, we look forward to hearing from the Department of Small Business Services about how they have addressed these concerns, both the old and the new concerns, since our previous hearing on the topic. I equally look forward to any testimony that bids themselves or any other members of the small business community would like to offer about their experiences and current needs, and of course, any additional areas where the city can continue to offer support. Finally, before we begin, I want to thank Rebecca Barilla and Jessica Boulay from Central Staff for their work in putting the saving together. I also want to acknowledge my Chief of Staff, Deona Reed, my Director of Community Engagement, Esperanza Diaz, and my Special Assistant, George Cook, all who have joined us today. I also want to acknowledge my colleague Eric Botcher, who has also joined us. And I want to thank everyone who will be testifying today. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, or thank you, Chair Feliz. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. I'm Jessica Boulay, Counsel to the Committee on Small Business. Before we begin testimony, I want to remind everyone who's joining on Zoom, you will be on mute until you are called on to testify. I will call on public witnesses to testify after the conclusion of the administration's testimony and council member questions. So please do listen carefully for your name to be called. Councilmembers, you will be called on for questions after the panel has completed their testimony. And I will now call representatives of the administration to testify. We will be hearing testimony from the Department of Small Business Services. I will administer the affirmation to, I believe we're joined by Deputy Commissioner Calvin Brown of the Neighborhood Development Division, Assistant Commissioner Raquel Oliveres, and Executive Director for the Bid Program and Organizational Development, Emily Edwards. Do you, oh, panelists, please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
I do.
Great, thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Deputy Commissioner Brown to present testimony.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Feliz and members of the Committee on Small Businesses. My name is Calvin T. Brown, and I'm the Deputy Commissioner for Neighborhood Development. I'm joined here today by Assistant Commissioner Raquel Oliveres and Emily Edwards, the Executive Director for Bid Program and Organizational Development. And we are pleased to testify for, on SBS' role overseeing and supporting our New York City Business Improvement Districts, otherwise known as the BIDS. SBS' mission is to unlock the economic potential and create economic security for all New Yorkers, creating, connecting them to good jobs, creating stronger businesses, and building thriving and vibrant neighborhoods. There are over two hundred small businesses in New York City, each contributing to a unique landscape in their community. SBS Neighborhood Development oversees and guides our network of business improvement districts and invests in commercial corridor revitalization through community-based development organizations. Business Improvement Districts were created in the aftermath of nineteen-seventies fiscal crisis as a public-private entity that provides supplemental services to commercial corridors. Over forty years later, our New York City network has grown to seventy-five, representing the country's largest business improvement network and spanning neighborhoods in all five boroughs. Per SBS FY22 analysis of bids trends, bids serve nearly three hundred miles of commercial corridors and invest more than one hundred and eighty-seven million into local economies in the form of supplemental services such as supplemental street cleaning, neighborhood beautification, place-making, and business attraction. Bids are governed by locally-controlled, non-for-profit boards consistent of locally property, local property owners, merchants, and local electors and residents. Working with city and local communities, bids serve as a powerful voice for their district and invest in the long-term success of the businesses in their commercial districts. Among other responsibilities, SBS supports the bid formation process when local stakeholders are interested in exploring creating bids in their neighborhood. All formation efforts begin with the creation of a steering committee. SBS provides technical assistance to each bid and participates as an advisory member of each steering committee. Under this administration, two new bids have been created, two bids were merged. In partnerships with City Council, we anticipate the creation of another bid, Cypress Hill, this year. We will always continue to provide such assistance to local communities and are happy to meet with members of this committee to explain the bid formation process in detail. As part of the Mayor's, Mayor's Adam Administration Blueprint for Economic Recovery, SBS expanded our support of bids by developing historic new grants to equitably rebuild New York City's commercial corridors. Delivering on the mayoral initiative, SBS created the first-ever bid development grant, totaling over one point four million in FY23 and FY24. These grants are spur, are spurring bid development efforts by twenty-one different organizations, and many, and many of them in low-to-moderate communities, income communities, sorry. Over the past two years, we have also delivered approximately three million in grants to smaller bids that historically lacked the capacity and the resources of larger bids in New York City. Knowing that every commercial corridor has the capacity to take on, not every commercial corridor has the capacity to take on bid formation, SBS and the Mayor's Office of Equity launched the first-ever Merchant Organizing Grant. We awarded over two point four million to fourteen organizations in FY23, nine hundred and fifteen thousand to eleven organizations in FY24. We have helped created or revitalized merchant organizations in more than twenty neighborhoods throughout New York City that helps to build the capacity for merchant engagement and organizing and can serve as a catalyst for future bids. Since the beginning of his administration, Mayor Adams has awarded six point seven million in grants to community-based organizations working in LMI neighborhoods through our Avenue NYC and Neighborhood 360 Grant Program. Avenue NYC enables community-based organizations to hire dedicated full-time project managers, complete commercial district needs assessments, otherwise known as CDNAs, and carry out impactful, data-driven assessments of their communities. Neighborhood 360 Grant provides funding to CBDOs to address key findings and commercial revitalization opportunities identified in the CDNAs. In addition to funding smaller bids, merchant organizing, merchant organizations, and community-based development organizations, SBS plays an important oversight role for bids as well. My staff monitors the fiscal and organizational health of all bids, manage each bid's contract with the city, and collects annual reports and audits. We manage the billing process, working with the Department of Finance, to process more than the one hundred and fifty million dollars received in assessments. SBS staff also serve as representatives on all of the bids for the mayor, including their audit and finance committees. Through this oversight role, we can target our capacity building and technical assistance services to address governance and compliance challenges within the bid network. We provide customized one-on-one support, workshops, and training for bid staff and boards, and facilitate best-practice sharing and professional development opportunities for bid leaders. Since the beginning of the pandemic, SBS has organized a monthly meeting with all bids, inviting city agency partners to provide updates to the New York City bid network during those meetings. These meetings provide an opportunity for SBS to hear from the bids about the on-ground challenges and the real-world implications of city policies. SBS also facilitates partnerships between bids, City Hall, including the Chief Public Realm Officer team on strategic initiatives that support small businesses and enhance the public realm. In two thousand, in twenty-twenty-two, Mayor Adams also established the first-ever Small Business Advisory Commission, which is chaired by SBS Commissioner Kim, where the New York City Bid Association provides feedback on city policies impacting local businesses. We remain committed as an agency to ensure that small businesses are thriving in every commercial corridor, and bids are a key partner to this work. Our historic programming over the past two years has supported thousands of businesses and will continue to work with our bid partners in making New York City the best place to shop, local. Thank you, and we look forward to any questions that you may have for us.
Thank you, thank you so much for all the information, also for all the work that you and your whole team does in supporting our bids, our small businesses, and our commercial corridors. So have pages of questions, but first hearing of the year on this issue. So just want to start with the very basics. Start with general information about how bids are funded. So how are bids funded? Assessments, donations, elected officials, what else?
So you, you named the basics, like through assessments that helps to fund bids budgets. They do get, some bids get donations, they raise money through grants. But like I mentioned in my testimony, this year, we were able to support the smallest of our bid network through our small bid grant, which allowed them to amplify the work that they've been doing along their commercial corridors without any impact to their assessments.
Okay, and what's the average budget slash revenue of a bid? An average bid, but also the average budget of the larger bids and the smaller bids?
So the average, so we'll call it the medium expense is five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, approximately five hundred and twenty-nine thousand. The smallest bid right now is one hundred, One Hundred and Eighty Street, and their bid is, have an assessment of about seventy-three thousand. And our largest expense bid is about twenty million.
Okay, and we have a lot of bids in the City of New York. We also have a lot of merchant associations. What's the difference between both of them?
So the difference between a bid and a merchant association is that a merchant association is a voluntary organization that supports the merchants within a specific geography, whereas a bid is legislated, and as part of that legislation, a geography is mapped, and every business, property owner within that, that geography has to pay into the assessment.
Okay, and questions about organizing a bid? What are some of the processes that need to happen in order to form a bid?
So as part of the bid formation process, it's a very community-driven process, which requires broad-based community support. So part of that is collacing those stakeholders in an identified geography to have steering committee meetings to discuss key issues that would contribute to the formation of a bid, like what would be the, the boundaries? What would the budget look like? What sort of services are needed within that geography?
And what are resources that you provide to commercial corridors that are in the process of forming a bid?
So we have an extensive, my team provide extensive resources, technical assistance to any neighborhood that is interested in forming a bid. We attend all of the steering committees once they are formed. Even before a steering committee is formed, any interested stakeholder, we provide them with what we call a bid one-on-one about the essentials that are needed, what a steering committee should comprise of. So we provide a lot of resources for the formation and throughout the process.
And what are obstacles that you've seen when communities are trying to form a bid? What are obstacles and what are resources that you provide so they could overcome those obstacles?
Some of the obstacles is getting that, that broad-based support. Everyone is not a fan of bid, but part of that is providing the education. So my team provides a lot of resources to those steering committees to make sure that they're communicating properly what a bid is, what the, what a bid does, what is intel in the bid process so that it's clear to those stakeholders what that process looks like, timeline, budget, resources, and all those things that are required.
Okay. We have approximately seventy-five, seventy-six bids in the City of New York, twenty-six in Manhattan, but we don't even have half of that in Brooklyn and in the Bronx. So what are factors that you would say are playing a role in terms of, you know, boroughs of Manhattan and the Bronx not having bids compared to the numbers of all the boroughs?
So there's twelve bids in the Bronx. There are twenty-two in Brooklyn, twenty-six in Manhattan, eleven in Queens, and four in Staten Island. And when it comes to bids, it's really about the location. It has to consist of commercial corridors. So there's a lot of factors that go into the formation. So we work with stakeholders throughout the bid process, offering technical assistance at every step. So when it comes to the difference in geography, it's really about where there's commercial continuity. And we help them work about, work, we help them work through the boundaries, what makes sense, what's realistic. There's certain properties that are not assessed, whether they're city-owned. So like, we have to work through, we help them work through some of those, those issues to come up with a reasonable boundaries for what a bid looks like.
Okay, and how many bids have been formed, let's say, in the last five years in the City of New York?
In the last two years, we had two bids that were formed, the West Village bid and Castle Hill bid. We have ten bids that are in our bid formation pipeline. So we're hoping to see a lot more bids in the future, especially with the additional resources that, you know, the Mayor's administration has provided us so we can provide that additional assistance through the bid formation process.
Okay. We obviously have thousands of commercial corridors in the City of New York, thousands of commercial corridors, but we only have about seventy-five bids. So, which means that overwhelming percentage of our commercial corridors don't have a bid. So just wondering what resources, if any, are available to commercial corridors that don't have a bid?
So if any commercial corridor that's interested in having a bid, they can definitely reach out to my division, Neighborhood Development. We can walk them through what that process looks like. And even before a neighborhood or organization is interested in a bid, there's a lot of stakeholder engagement that is, that is needed. So depending on where they are in that process, we can help guide them about, well, maybe there's a, you need to do merchant organizing first. If they're further along, there's other resources like the bid exploration, which we were able to provide a lot of support to neighborhoods who are in that initial stage to give them that, that boost, that financial and resource boost so that they can really engage the stakeholders. So there's resources, and even outside of the grants, like I stated, any neighborhood organization interested in a bid, they can reach out to my team, and we can kind of walk them through what those initial steps are.
Does SBS provide any resources for communities that aren't interested in forming a bid? Or let's say they tried, but they weren't successful. Are there any resources for those commercial?
We do, we support commercial corridors through our Avenue NYC grant, our Neighborhood 360 grants. We have a very useful tool, which is the Commercial District Needs Assessment, which helps organizations who are supporting commercial corridors identify some of those challenges and issues along their corridor. And then my team also works with them to think about strategies for addressing those concerns that are highlighted in the CDNA.
Okay, cool. Thank you for the information. A few more questions, and then I'll pass it on to colleagues, and then I'll continue my questioning. Just for general context and background for those that are with us today and don't have the information with them. What's the total SBS budget? And also, what's your total budget for grants for bids?
So our grants for bids is five point three million, which covered a number of the different programs that I mentioned, like support in merchant organizing, support in bid exploration, and support in the small, the single districts where we provided funding to the smallest bids of our, the small bids of our bid network. And we can get back to you with SBS agency's budget.
Okay, and what are some of the most used or most popular grants that businesses usually, or bids usually come, apply for?
Well, they love the small bid grant. But our bids have also been beneficiaries of the Neighborhood 360 and Avenue NYC grant. Even though a bid has been formed, this analysis helped them assess some of the challenges that they have along their commercial corridor.
Okay, thank you so much for the information. I have some additional questions, but I'll pass it on to my colleague, Councilmember Palladino, for some questions.
Thank you. Being a small business owner myself, many years ago, but I was in business for over thirty years. My sister is a small business owner. My family had started a business here in New York in nineteen forty-seven and closed it in twenty-fourteen. It was down in the Village. And I'm very familiar with small business. However, when it comes to my district nineteen, you mentioned there's eleven bids in Queens. Can you name the areas? I know there's several, but can you name the eleven for me, please?
So in your district, we have the Bayside Village bid.
Right.
And we've been funding, you know, merchant organizing groups. College Point is one of them that's received the merchant organizing grant for the initial stages to sort of collate those stakeholders. And in Queens, in general, we have one hundred and sixty-fifth Street bid, the One Eightieth Street bid, Eighty-Second Street Partnership, Bayside Village, as I mentioned, Downtown Flushing, Gateway JFK, Jamaica Center, and Long Island City Partnership, Myrtle Avenue, Queens, and Steinway Street.
The reason why I'm asking is because my community, which goes from College Point to Little Neck, Dougliston, and we got Flushing, North Flushing in between, and the only bid that really seems to be working out a bit is the Bayside bid. And I just had them in my office this week. So my, I want to get more people involved because we do have the Whitestone Merchants Association. We do have the College Point Merchants Association. And listening to you speak, and you mentioning the different services that you offer, I think one of the biggest things or challenges for me was trying to talk the people into, that have the merchants associations, into becoming bids. We need some revitalization in College Point and on the Boulevard. What I'm going to ask you today is if perhaps we could chat after this meeting, because I think what you need to do, in my district anyway, I do a lot of town halls. I bring you to the people. So that this way, any questions that they may have, like I could put together a room of, let's say, a hundred different store owners, maybe more, you know, from every piece of my district, every area. And I invite you to come, and I give them the whole thing, what I want to do. And this way, it, it sparks their interest. Because I don't think, because I know they have to participate as stakeholders, which means they have to contribute. So the Bayside bid, for example, is Bell Boulevard. Bell Boulevard is very lengthy, and it consists mostly of restaurants these days. It used to be known as Beer Boulevard. Now, now it's Bell Boulevard, and it's a restaurant hub. But I'd like more than four or five people to participate in the bid. So I think the, what they're lacking is a very strong board of directors, that's for sure, knowing them now, going on my third year, and knowing how a business needs to rerun. They need to understand exactly what it is, and listening to what you, I have it right here, and listening to you speak, you seem to offer a great deal, other than funding. It's more about how they could keep their business going. And I think that's, knowledge is power. So I am going to, you and I will have a conversation, and I'd like to do a town hall in District nineteen so that we could perhaps maybe flip some of the merchants associations into a bid and get, get College Point Boulevard striving. It's really faltering.
No, definitely, that would, that would be great. And we can not only talk about the, the full suite of services that we have in Neighborhood Development, but the full suite of services that SBS has in general that can help merchants and small businesses.
And I was interested, you said something about beautification?
Yes, so beautification is one of the components that, you know, bids, they, they've been able to do through this extra resources that we've been able to provide them, and helping them identify where that beautification can happen. There's a lot of.
Well, they all need it.
Yes.
Because they're just, you know, everything is very rundown now. Everything is very old, and people need to take better care of their storefronts. And I have said that to them time and again, that you need to sweep in front of your store. Would be nice if you put a potted plant outside. You know, there's certain things that you could do on your own. But I am going to talk to you some more. This was very, very informative for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Palladino. And now I'll pass it on to Councilmember Eric Botcher.
Hi. I'd love to get your thoughts on bid coverage for neighborhoods that are more residential in nature than commercial. In Council District Three, we have a lot of bids, and we, we love our bids. We have the Hudson Square bid, the West Village bid, the Village Alliance, the Meat Packing bid. We've got the Garment District bid, the Hudson Yards HK bid. We've got the Times Square Alliance, the Thirty-Fourth Partnership. They all do a great job. But we have a lot of residents who aren't included in a bid area, and they want bid coverage for their neighborhoods because they see the difference in services. When you cross the street into an area that's covered by a bid, you get better sanitation, you get landscaping with tree pits and flower baskets from the light pools. You have new waste baskets, you have augmented homeless outreach services, small business support. So much that comes along with a bid. In Chelsea, we don't have a bid for the largely residential area of Chelsea, and we hear year after year, folks, residents coming forward, and they would like bid coverage in Chelsea. Challenge is, we don't have, like, big commercial anchors. Challenge is, we don't have like big commercial anchor tenants that could help with the formation of the bid. Uh, Google, for example, they're already included in the Meat Packing bid. In, in prior years, I had heard, um, from the, the prior administration that residential neighborhoods shouldn't necessarily have bids, that it should be for more commercial neighborhoods. I'd love to get your thoughts on that and maybe some suggestions about how residents could form bids if they're not in a primarily commercial neighborhood.
Well, as you know, uh, council member, the, the way that the bid legislation is structured, it, it really does, um, require commercial property owners. So that would have to be a, a, a very full, fuller discussion, um, to discuss what that mechanics will look like. Um, right now, the way that bid legislation is structured, it really does require, um, a s- significant amount of commercial, um, property owners to contribute to the assessment. So there's no mechanism at this point right now, uh, there, there are some bids, I mean, take a step back, that do assess residential properties, but not at the level that they assess commercial properties. So we're happy to have follow-up on the discussion, um, later on.
One model would be the West Village bid, which is in a, in a, uh, what you could think of as a primarily residential area, the Seventh Avenue South area of the Village, not your average bid. Um, they've been able to cobble together enough commercial buildings to make it work. I would love to discuss with you a way of, um, and maybe we could do some public awareness out in our districts about if folks want to follow the model of the West Village bid and sort of cobble together, something that might pencil out how they would proceed with that.
Yeah, we can definitely discuss that. And, and the West Village, um, bid is, is fairly new, so definitely a case study that we can continue to analyze.
All right, thank you so much, uh, for the questions. I would also like to recognize council member Krishnan, who has joined us, as well as council member Ang, who has joined us via Zoom. Uh, a few more questions about, um, grants and processes, um, and et cetera. What steps does SBS take to make sure that the local bids and the small business owners know about these grants?
Yes, um, we send out to, specifically to the bids, we send out notices about upcoming grants. We have, um, a bid bulletin that goes out to all the bids, but we also send out, um, a bi-weekly email that correspondent that goes to the bids about information. And then even outside of that, um, we send out correspondence to elected community boards, um, to a, a, a full suite of, of non-for-profit organizations that we have a list serve of about upcoming grant opportunities. And then we even before, um, the grant, uh, application period closes, we provide opportunities for, um, training, uh, not training, sorry, informational's rather, about what the grant entails, when the deadline ends, um, and how to apply.
And talk to us about the application process, um, timelines, documents needed, how lengthy are the applications? How quickly can a bid complete these applications generally? How long are these applications?
Um, it, it, it depends on, uh, the bid, every organization, um, you know, the capacity that they have. Um, but my team, um, specifically for the grants that we issue throughout our division, we're there to support them. Um, as people know, there's a procurement process for, um, accessing any, uh, city funds. So we walk them through what that process looks like, the documents that they need. Um, luckily for the bids, sometimes we have some of those documents, so we try to supplement where we can, um, and then work through, you know, s- other information that they may need.
How fast after completing the application, uh, could bids generally, um, expect to receive the grant?
So this, our grants are reimbursable grants. So part of receiving the funding, you have to execute work that is within the s- the scope of work. And then once you provide us with that documentation, then you get reimbursed. Um, with, particularly for the single district small bid grant, we try to minimize some of those, um, uh, hurdles, um, where we can at least upfront some funding with the bids just identifying some of the work that they would execute. So that way we can get, kickstart some of the work in their commercial districts.
And after, uh, submitting the application and completing all the requirements, how long do, are they generally reimbursed by?
Um, once we have all the invoices, um, the, it's six to ten days before, uh, in, uh, they receive, uh, their funding. Baring no issues, like sometimes, you know, there may be like technical issues with ACH pay, uh, transfers. So like barring any issues, it's six to ten.
And I could see a lot of challenges, especially for the smaller bids, when it comes to staffing, not being able to have the capacity or the staff to timely complete, uh, the different processes. So just wondering what type of help are available for, is available for these, uh, smaller bids who don't have a big staff to be able to, you know?
That, that's a great question. Um, I, I can't emphasize enough how we really do care for our small bids. We realize the utility and information that they provide to us about what's happening in their commercial corridors. So when they're experiencing any contractual invoicing challenges, my division does have a team, um, our finance and operation team that provides one-on-one, um, uh, support to any, um, organization that is finding the process difficult. Um, many of our small bids, we realized that they weren't, um, used, they weren't used to getting funded in this way outside of discretionary. So we had to, you know, educate them on that process. So we do provide a lot of support to make sure that we can minimize any of the tension that they may be experiencing with, um, procuring money from the city.
And what are examples of, uh, that in practice? What are examples of ways that you've helped those smaller, smaller businesses or bids in the past?
Um, so, if they may have, you know, filled out, we, I don't wanna get into the we's, but like there's a document, um, for, uh, getting reimbursed. Um, we'll have someone from our contract management team who would be on the phone with them and walk them through, uh, the correct way of filling out those forms. Just to make sure that by the time we get it, that we can minimize the time so that we can, you know, internally in SBS send it to the other division that will process those payments.
All right, thank you for the information. Uh, now I'll pass it on to council member Krishnan, who has a few questions and then we'll hear from council member Paladino.
Thanks so much, Chair Feliz. Um, unfortunately, I can only stay for a few minutes, jumping back to the education hearing. Um, and I apologize if this was already covered, but I just, I did wanna just highlight, um, and the chair's questions just now, um, alluded to it too. The contracting process and the reimbursement and registration is a real issue. And, and not just with bids, frankly, all across nonprofit organizations. Um, and, uh, the, just the process of contracting and registration reimbursement is really hurting both bids, as I, as I said, as, as well as organizations. So, and I just wanted to, you know, call attention to, because it seems like something that should be easy to fix, although I know that it's unfortunately just has been a disappoint, very disappointing reality of city government, uh, is that we can't figure this out. But I, I would urge you all to just really take a close look at how you can streamline reimbursements because it's putting organizations from bids to nonprofits, um, you know, they're fronting a lot of money, um, floating a lot of money and not able to get it back for a lengthy period of time. And it just seems like there has to be a way to really cut through the bureaucracy of that process to, uh, to at least solve that piece of it.
Thank you, and we will de- definitely, we, we continue to find ways so that we can minimize that, um, impact, especially to our smallest organizations that support our commercial corridors. But we'll definitely continue to work on ways that we can minimize that, that time.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, council member, and now council member Paladino.
Okay, now I did a little math. Uh, and I'm, I'm very curious, uh, I go line by line, I guess that's just from being in business. Uh, I see fiscal year was a hundred and eighty-seven million. Fiscal year twenty-three, one point four million was given in grants. Three million were given to smaller bids. Is this all-inclusive in the one eighty-seven? And then an, an additional two point four million was given to fourteen organizations in fifth, in fiscal year twenty-three. And another nine hundred and fifteen thousand was given to eleven organizations in fiscal year twenty-four. How do we keep our records? How do we know how this money is being spent? When we give bids money, and this is an awful lot of money. I'm just real curious, how do we keep track of these numbers? Do, what kind of reports, being a bid, having a board, and operating this as a business? Uh, how do we keep track of these numbers that I just, I just went by, you know, I just, I just laid out for you?
Yeah, so I, I, I believe the one hundred and eighty-seven is the amount that bids invest into their neighborhoods in terms of the supplemental cleaning and some of the services that they do. The two top, the two top being sanitation and district marketing. But, um, that's a very good question, but we do keep track of how the, the bids are spending the, the small bid support grant, um, some of the services that they're doing. They provide us with a scope of work, um, that they would be doing. Um, and then they provide us invoices that match that scope of work.
Yeah.
And, and, and we also have audits. Um, audits that accounts for how bids are spending. And that's even outside of our grants. That's one of the, uh, things that we, as an oversight agency, um, look at with bids.
Because greed always steps in here some way, somehow. And, you know, people do things and, you know, when I did a, a job for somebody, there was a receipt. And then there was a running receipt, if I charge X amount of dollars to get something done. You know, I line item every contractor and what they did. Do the bids do similar? So if you allow a bid, a smaller bid, like that's in my neighborhood, let's just say hypothetical, two million dollars, you give the Bayside bid, what do they give you as proof as to how they used? Cause I know what my, my, um, the president of the board of directors makes, it's an awful lot of money. So, uh, there is a little bit of that in there as well. I just am curious, I just wanna make sure that every nickel and dime, especially with the city in this, in the, uh, position that we're in right now, bids are necessary. I wanna see businesses grow, I wanna do this town hall, but I also wanna keep track of the bottom line. We're talking tens of millions of dollars and greed has a way of stepping in. Do they give you a receipt? You know, we did this, we did that, how does it, how is it accounted for?
So as it relates to our grants, they do provide us with invoices. Um, as it relates to ju- just generally accounting, our bids do a wonderful job managing. Sometimes the limited resources that they have, um, as I stated, um, they do audits. Um, we, when I say we, my team, we sit on their audit, their finance, um, uh, committee teams. When they provide new budgets, they have to provide budgets at the end. We get those budgets, they have to submit those budgets to, um, SBS. So there's accounting of it. Um, so they're, they're doing a tremendous job sometimes with limited resources.
Right.
And this is why, you know, SBS, we're here, my team, we are constantly trying to find ways to just help them do the work that they're doing.
Wonderful, I look forward to working with you, thank you so much, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, council member. And on that, um, topic of the smaller bids, are there any grants to help set the floor in terms of the in-house resources that smaller bids have? I could only imagine the, the grants and the opportunities that the smaller bids lose out on due to the fact that they don't have staff to make, uh, people aware of the grants available or don't have the staff to be able to fight for resources.
Yes, uh, excuse me, um, we, like I said, we provide, we have a, a bid support team that, you know, any bid, small bid can reach out to and we can assess what those challenges are. Sometimes the challenge is, is due to the assessments. But each year, we, um, survey the bids to see which bid would like to increase their assessment. Um, we walk them through that process. We actually have a, an assessment, um, increased webinar that's coming up to kind of walk bids through the steps of how they can increase their assessments, which is a legislative process. But we wanna make sure that they get the buy-in from their board, they engage stakeholders. So that's one way that they sort of can increase their capacity is by, um, increasing the, uh, their assessment.
Have we thought about, um, or explored, um, any grants that could potentially set the floor in terms of funding for specific bids? Just to make sure that they are, um, properly funded? For example, a bid that has, um, a total budget of, um, ninety thousand dollars per year, bumping it up to one hundred fifty thousand through grants and making that the potential floor.
Something that we haven't explored, but welcome, you know, to follow up with you to kind of walk through what that will look like.
Okay, cool. Um, and a few questions about, uh, two different grants. I'll start with, uh, uh, the Small Bid Support Grant. Um, how much funding is available to the Small Bid, uh, Support Grant program? And what is the maximum that a bid could receive through that, uh, program?
So the maximum, uh, the, it was budgeted at five point three million, but as I stated, um, there were other things that the grant funded, like merchant organizing, bid exploration, bid formation. Now, what we call the Single District Grant, that's went specifically to the bids. Um, and a bid could receive up to a hundred thousand dollars, but it was based on their proposal. Um, and once we evaluated their proposal, then we made, uh, an, a, a decision on what was, um, appropriate for the award.
Uh, and what's the minimum that they could receive under that program? And how is the amount determined? How do we determine what's appropriate for the award?
Um, it was really based on the s- the s- the scope of work and, and the need. Um, we, you know, as, you know, the division that supports all bids, we, we knew that some bids had more needs than others. So the way that we looked at it was what they articulated in their, their scope of work. Um, and how, and, and it didn't make sense in terms of the budget and what we could, uh, necessarily award them. So it wasn't really like a, a, like a, a bottom, like a, a minimum. Um, we made sure that no bid received less than fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, and what are needs that would be covered under that program? I'm sure sanitation, security, events?
I would say that our bid network, th- the fact that they were given the opportunity to sort of, uh, increase and amplify the work that they currently, uh, do, um, and, and without any impact to their assessment. Some bids were very creative with, um, some of the programming that they wanted to do to bring more foot traffic to their commercial corridors. Some did add additional funding to their sanitation or their district marketing, or they, um, uh, boasted up their beautification. So it really depended on the bid and what they felt was a need that they, you know, was unable to meet, given their current assessments.
Uh, what are stipulations on how this funding could be used? And also can a small bid apply twice a year for that grant if they have two different initiatives? One that they think about after they submitted the initial application?
So, so the way that our grants work is on the, the fiscal year, so there's only one opportunity to apply at the beginning. Um, but we made sure that it was ample enough time for all bids who were eligible to apply. So you would only have one opportunity to apply for the grant. And the grants did have to, uh, follow what we called the Neighborhood Three-Sixty rules. So there's certain limitations of what is allowable and disallowable, um, in terms of their budget, um, in t- in terms of what they were able to use the funding. Now, if they had any changes to what they originally, um, proposed to us, we did allow an opportunity for a budget modification. And once again, that's where my team will work with them to, you know, understand what they needed to change and how they need to reallocate it funding that was awarded to them.
And what has been the overall feedback from small bids on that funding? Any challenges that they've talked about, including for example, the timelines, when they receive the funds?
Um, yes, I mean, we will acknowledge that the bid, the, the timeline and getting the money out. Um, but like I said, we've been working to make sure that we can streamline it as possible. But the overall feedback has been great. Um, the bids love the grant. Um, as I stated, it t- it takes the pressure off of their assessments, so they can really think creatively. You know, we, we love this grant because it allows our bids to, you know, get out of the normal route of what they do and to think and really envision the future of these commercial corridors by amplifying the work that they're currently doing.
Uh, can you talk to us a little bit more about those challenges? Is it challenges related to the timeline regarding the application or when they receive the grants? Could you give us some examples of, of those challenges?
So, I mean, this year has been typically, um, you know, late, just given OMB's OTP, um, s- spending freezes. Um, but like I stated, is that there are procurement documents that each bid has to provide us in order for us to, um, award them, I mean, and re- I'm sorry, release the funding. So sometimes we have to go back and, it can vary across the, the bid network depending on, um, how, the turnaround time in terms of providing those documents. And once those documents are provided, you know, we work as, as, as fast as we can to sort of expedite any reimbursement. That comes uh, with this uh, grant.
Okay, thank you for the information on that. Now moving on to different grants, the bid development program, could you talk to us a little bit about that grant?
Yes, so currently in um, F Y uh, twenty-four, we have um. Ten organizations that are receiving um, the bid development grant um, under our bid formation. Um, and then we have four that are receiving our bid exploration grant. Um, and this has been a wonderful addition to our sort of support. Um, providing um, neighborhoods an opportunity to explore what a bid could look like. So part of it is making sure that they have funding to do what we call um, demonstration projects. So they can demonstrate for those stakeholders within this identified geography, what it would look like to provide some of those services. And then the bid formation um, grant is, these are organizations that are already in our bid pipeline. Who are in one of the various phases of the bid formation process. And the bid fo- um, formation grant has allowed um, a number of those groups to advance. Um, the additional support has allowed them to advance, one of our, I mentioned in my testimony Cypress Hills. Um, it's, it's going into legislative because they were a recipient of that bid formation grant. And been able to use those resources so they can do the additional outreach to get them to uh, the last phase of the bid formation process.
And how does the funding work for that uh, program, I mean, the bids haven't been formed yet, they're probably not a five oh one C three.
You have to be a five oh one C three to um, be a recipient of any of the grants that we receive.
Right, so how could that potentially help um, a bid? How could that help form a bid when they're not?
Cause usually there's an organization that is helping to sponsor, who is helping to facilitate the steering committee um, and outreach. Um, some of those organizations uh, work with consultants that can help them move the pro- the process along.
Okay, so I guess um, local community board or merchant association, that type of. Got it, okay, um, how much funding is available through the, through that uh, grant? And also what's the maximum, what's the minimum that could be received?
Um, for the bid formation, um, it was up to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and F Y, uh, and then for bid exploration is twenty thousand dollars. Per organization, sorry. So per organization, twenty thousand dollars for bid exploration. And then for bid formation, um, is up to a hundred thousand dollars per organization. Depending on where they are in the bid formation um, process.
Okay, and what would be covered under the exploration stage? I guess doing merchant organizing.
But we do have a deliverable because part of it is to make sure that we're setting them, get, making sure that they do the prerequisites to get them into the. Um, bid formation pipeline, so part of it is doing a needs assessment of their neighborhood, identifying who the stakeholders are. So that's, that and a demonstration project are like the main deliverables for bid exploration. Um, the twenty thousand dollars grant, bid formation, um, like I said, it depends on where the. A steering committee is in the bid formation process. Whether, if they're in the planning phase, which is the initial stage of the bid formation process. Um, many of the organizations use it to uh, support uh, hiring a consultant that can help facilitate those steering committee meetings. If you're in the outreach phase, um, that requires a lot of on-the-ground work. So it support a lot of the outreach that is done to the stakeholders. And then if you're in the legislative phase, there's like some mail-ins, there's some, you know, district plan uh, work that they have to do. So it really depends on where they are in the phase.
Yeah, what, what has been the overall feedback from bids and members of a community trying to form a bid? Uh, what has been the overall feedback on this grant and the funding?
It, it has been amazing, it, it has been amazing, I, I think we even appreciate it because we got to see organizations that. Um, may have stalled because they didn't have the resources to move forward. Now we're seeing those organizations um, move, advancing um, in the bid uh, formation process.
Okay, and now moving on to general budget questions. Um, has any bid funding been halted due to the pegs, also how has uh, the SBS been affected by pegs?
Um, I can say specifically, unfortunately, um, neighborhood development within SBS. Um, has had a minimum impact to um, the pegs, but it has not impacted. Um, the bid, the small bid grant um, funding.
Okay, um, also some final questions. One of the biggest issues that um, we hear from small businesses and commercial corridors. Is a quality of life and safety general issues, are there any grants uh, specifically on those issues? Safety, quality of life, not including of course sanitation, that's a little bit separate, but general safety.
So e- even outside of our grants and I can speak on it, um, you know, Mayor Adams has convened a, 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 a retail theft. Um, task force, um, many of our bids are part of the task force. Um, helping to, you know, develop and think about best practices or ideas that can um, you know, approach these quality of life issues. Um, our division, neighborhood development, we convene um, a, a monthly bid call. And we, you know, we hear from the bids directly about some of the concerns they have on their corridors, if it relates to a particular agency. We make those connections, um, we also direct bids to um, Community Links, which is um. A, a, a process that comes out of the uh, first deputy mayor's office and, you know, Mayor Adams um, has uh. Task NYPD to work with other agencies to address any chronic issues that are happening in these districts. So a lot of our bids um, submit concerns to the Community Links. Um, and you know, uh, Community Links will then support whatever those concerns are.
Okay, alright, so we talked about the small bid support grant, also the bid development program. Any other grants that are very popular that we didn't talk about today?
So I would, I would keep going, our Avenue N Y C, our Neighborhood Three Sixty. Um, these, these are grants that really support um, commercial corridors. We had the opportunity to have a new grant this year, which was the Commercial District Lighting Grant. Which um, you know, provided an opportunity for those organizations to bring um, additional light into their commercial corridors. Not just the typical holiday lights, but lights that um, may speak to the identity of a neighborhood. Lights that will bring people to those co- commercial corridors. And it's, it was one of our most popular grants, meaning that in the application process, we had um, the largest number of people applied for it. So it's, it's been one of our um, uh, popular grants for F Y twenty-four. But all of our grants in neighborhood development are, you know, geared towards building a capacity. Um, and supporting commercial corridors and the small businesses within them.
Yeah, could you talk to us a little bit more about the neighborhood and the Avenue N Y C grant, what are services that that would help uh, cover?
So the Avenue N Y C um, and Neighborhood Three Sixty, th- this helps build the capacity of the organization. Because as part of those grants, they have to hire a dedicated full-time person to really work on this grant. Um, as part of those grants, um, organizations uh, learn about how to assess the challenges on their commercial corridors. Um, they also learn how to do outreach to the stakeholders within the corridors that they're serving. Um, and then working with my team, work on a scope of work that can address some of the challenges that they have identified. So this is a part of building a capacity, so even once the grant ends, this organization is left with those skills. On how to, you know, really identify some of these issues and how to think through ways of addressing those concerns. Further, we always connect all of our grantees back to the larger services that we have at SBS. Whether it's N Y C Best who can help get through the um, red tape. Or bringing out our Mobi, uh, mobile unit who can come directly to those commercial corridors. And support, and adhere some of the concerns directly from those small businesses. So our grantees basically act like an ambassador to some of the services that we have at SBS. And to kind of really promote some of the um, larger resources that the agency has to support commercial corridors and small businesses.
Okay, are there any grants available to help reactivate um, this advan- the disadvantaged uh, commercial corridors? Let's take corridors that have high vacancy rate, uh, those uh, corridors, I'm sure that they, it's gonna be very difficult for them to form a bid. Or to even get resources, given that they're not organized?
Yeah, so um, this is where the Commercial District Needs Assessment comes into play. Because I think if there's a, a commercial corridor that is experiencing those sorts of challenges, having that sort of assessment. Can then help formulate what the um, the intervention should be. Um, now it does require a community partner. So that's where, you know, we're welcome to, like, if there's any neighborhoods that, you know, you can identify that have those challenges. We have to um, connect it to a community partner who can help facilitate uh, the, the grant.
Okay, cool, any questions?
Yes, I do.
Of course, all yours.
It, it's um, I'm very excited, only because I wanna see more people participate. I see the reasons why they may not, because of the organization fee. And how you set up, it's already like at a hundred thousand, I know my people are strapped. You know, some areas are really, one of the main reasons why they don't start a bid is because of the startup. And then getting the other stores to participate, that's why you coming in and talking to them. And making them understand exactly what it is they're going to benefit by their investment. What their investment is going to ultimately give them back, which is, is a tremendous amount. Now, I do holiday lights for the White Soul Merchants, I fund that, uh, I do other little things. But this, they need to get involved in this, and I really think that being just a merchants association, while it's good and it's community organized and all of that. Uh, I think the bottom line ev- is a constant line, is what it costs to participate. They always see that, and I, and I try to explain to people, you have to first put in, in order to get out. And uh, that's why I'm, I'm really dead set on uh, on, on getting you over to my district and doing what needs to be done. There needs to be more of this, thank you, I, I'm just, my head's spinning, thank you very much.
You, you're welcome, council member.
Thank you so much, council member, uh, I don't have any more questions, but just wanna thank you all for all the work that you do uh, to support. Our small businesses and our bids, uh, our bids are again, the heart of our economy, uh, they do so much for our communities. Uh, they're the ones that make sure that our communities are vibrant, uh, our bids make sure that our commercial corridors. Um, are corridors where people wanna come to, to shop, uh, to eat and visit, so just wanna thank you all for all the work that you do. Um, and I'm looking very forward to uh, working together.
Yes, and, and Chair, I just wanted to mention, we got that, that number, um, the adopted budget was two hundred and eighty-three point five million for SBS.
Uh, sorry, repeat that again?
Two hundred and eighty-three point five million.
Two eighty-three point five million, that's the total budget for SBS?
Uh, yes, for F Y twenty-four.
Perfect, thank you so much, alright, well, thank you so much, uh, now turn back to our moderator, uh, Jessica Belain, thank you so much.
Is this working, oh, it's working, alright. Um, alright, thank you very much, um, thank you Chair, we will now turn to public testimony. I'd like to remind everyone that um, each panelist today will have two minutes to present their testimony. And recording is not permitted while providing testimony, this is being live streamed on council website. We'll start first with those who have joined us here in person, I will call individuals by name and you may step up to the table. Uh, we will start with Rafael Moore Punnett. From Bronx Community Board Six, Nicole Painter from the N Y C Bid Association, and Christopher Leon Johnson.
I just wanna briefly thank you Rafael, uh, district manager of Community Board Six, we've been working very hard. Uh, to organize merchants in the East Tremont section of the Bronx, uh, hopefully we could realize the bid in that uh, high needs. Area of the Bronx, which had so much potential.
Alright, um, I will call each of you by name and if you could wait until the sergeant has started the timer. Um, and then council members, if you have questions for a particular panelist, let me know. And um, you may ask after each panelist has completed their testimony. Um, so I would like to welcome first Rafael Moore.
Thank you, oh, thank you, council member, um.
Uh, if Sergeant is, are you ready? Thanks.
So I'd like to thank the committee for allowing me to speak and thank Councilman Feliz, um, for his, uh, in his new, encouraging him on his new role, looking forward to working with him on. Um, working with merchants in Council District Fifteen and Community Board Six. My name is Rafael Moore, I'm the district manager of Community Board Six. Um, and as the council member mentioned, the, the board has been working on um, organizing merchants along East Tremont Avenue in the neighborhood of East Tremont. And I wanted to speak to some of the challenges in uh, merchant organizing and trying to access SBS funding. In neighborhoods that are low income and there isn't already infrastructure in merchant organizing. Um, East Tremont used to be a bustling commercial district that people from all over the city knew about. When F D R was running for reelection, he would drive down uh, East Tremont Avenue to see voters, this was like a key area in the Bronx. And when the economy of the Bronx changed in the seventies, it became very depressed and has yet to recover. Um, there is no merchant org- there's no merchant uh, association, there was one for a couple of years. Um, there was an attempt at forming a bid, which fell apart because of infighting over who would get the Avenue N Y C SBS funding. Um, and so I think that really, what I wanna highlight for the committee is the challenge in, in accessing Avenue N Y C funding. In neighborhoods where there isn't an infrastructure of nonprofits that can apply for the money, and that's what we're seeing in East Tremont. Um, in fiscal year twenty-three, I spoke to several nonprofits about applying for the Avenue N Y C funding. And no one really saw that was within their wheelhouse and no one applied for the funding, and so. Money that SBS has ready and available to support businesses wasn't spent in a low-income neighborhood. That could really benefit from assistance from the city in merchant organizing. Um, part of what I think, the, the feedback that I wish SBS was here to hear is that. Um, SBS I think could look more proactively in how to promote Avenue N Y C funding. They mentioned they have a mailing list, but if you're not already doing merchant organizing, you're not gonna be on that mailing list. And be aware of these funding opportunities when they come around. Um, and so that's why I think we think that SBS could really expand upon is um, being more proactive and thinking about what kind of nonprofits. In a neighborhood could access this funding.
Cool, sounds good, thank you so much for the testimony.
Thank you.
If there are no more questions, then I would like to call Nicole Painter.
Thank you, Chair Feliz and members of the New York City Council Committee on Small Business, my name is Nicole Painter. And I am testifying today on behalf of the New York City Bit Association. I'm also the executive director of the Columbus Avenue Bid on the Upper West Side of Manhattan. The New York City Bit Association represents all of the city's seventy-six business improvement districts, which are as diverse as the city itself. The association's mission has always been to support small businesses, to keep our neighborhoods clean and safe and to bring prosperity to our communities. We are proud to serve nearly three hundred miles of commercial corridors, including around one hundred thousand businesses. And to invest more than a combined one hundred and eighty-seven million dollars in services back into our communities. Some additional statistics from the fiscal year twenty-two bid trends report is included in our written submitted testimony. Bids work very closely with our partners at the Department of Small Business Services, we interact with several of the divisions within SBS, including Business Services. And the Office of Nightlife, we work most closely with the Neighborhood Development Division. This team is led by Deputy Commissioner Calvin Brown and is tasked with bid oversight and support. Creating capacity building opportunities for community-based organizations. And the development and management of grant programs that deliver critical resources for bids. This includes a small bid grant program, Avenue N Y C, Neighborhood Three Sixty and others. We are very grateful for the partnership of Mayor Adams, SBS Commissioner Kim and the City Council in recent years. In particular, we want to thank everyone for their advocacy and support of additional funding for small bids through the Small Bid Grant Program to deliver critical services. As a part of the rebuild, renew, reinvent bru- blueprint for economy recovery. Mayor Adams laid out an ambitious plan to form new bids, expand current bid catchment areas. And to provide additional assistance to small bids to serve districts across the city. Small bids are hard at work to deliver on the promise of this funding, which is being put to use on everything from graffiti removal and street beautification. To lights for Ramadan celebrations and business attraction efforts. This program was launched in fiscal year twenty-three and renewed in fiscal, oops. Okay, uh, fiscal year twenty-four, we are hopeful this funding will be renewed in fiscal year twenty-five. Ultimately, we hope this program is baselined in order to create certainty for small bids. Unfortunately, due to the challenges of contracting with the city, bids are again awaiting contract registration and rushing to deliver these services as quickly as possible. Before the fiscal year ends, which is not ideal. Despite these challenges, we do wanna commend, commend SBS for the urgency, nimbleness and creativity that they have shown in standing up this grant program. Baselining this funding would ensure that bids can strategically plan to use this funding for the most important needs of their districts moving forward. We strongly urge Mayor Adams and the City Council to continue to support our small bids through this new program. In addition to the critical work our bids do on the ground.
Please conclude.
Okay, we're proud that two bid leaders Matthew Bauer and Nina Flores have been serving on the Mayor's Small Business Advisory Commission. We hope that we can continue to work with the SBS, the, the mayor and the council to advance reform efforts. To reduce red tape, encourage entrepreneurship and stem the tide of store front. to reduce red tape, encourage entrepreneurship, and stem the tide of storefront vacancies. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christopher Leon Johnson. Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Were there any questions? All right. In that case, I will invite Christopher Leon Johnson.
All right. Hello, my name is Christopher Le- Leon Johnson, and I wanna say this right now. I know that there's, there's a lot of BIDs that do the right thing. They clean up streets, they work with the small business owners, and they make sure the streets are safe and the businesses are safe with the NYPD, and they work with community boards and the, the business management or, or agencies like this one, Columbus. But there's one BID that, that I know that's gonna be into small business, FY25 and FY26, which is gonna be based in North Brooklyn. It's gonna be called the North Brooklyn BID. Now, I wanna say this right now, that the City Council, you are the Small Business Chair, the Chair of the, the, the Worker Protection, need to decline funding for the North Brooklyn BID. And I'll tell you why. Because the North Brooklyn BID is ran by, will be ran by Kenny, Katie Denny Horowitz, who is corrupt, who mentioned on camera that there was no, there is no need for a North Brooklyn BID, but she wouldn't be the head of it, and all this is about with her is trying to collect money from business owners. And I smell a lot of corruption. I smell a lot of extortion gonna happen if this get approved. Now, we all know that, where was Lincoln, I don't know if Lincoln Wrestler was here today, but this needs to be sent to the Ethics Committee because Lincoln Wrestler has a big stake with this North Brooklyn BID idea that they have planned out for the city of New York. This need to be rejected. Kenny Denny Horowitz is connected to a seven-time stalker that is named Kevin Lachera and a racist, anti-police racist named Ryan Knoen, who both are members of Brooklyn Community Board One. And I'll tell you this, guys, write this right now. If this ever happens, and I know very soon it will happen, they're gonna extort all the business owners saying, "Well, if you don't do this, we're gonna screw your business over." They did this with the Open Streets, Open Berry Street. All hell is gonna break loose, and it's gonna set all the community boards back and all the BIDs back. Because their BID gotta do the right thing, but this one that is, they cooking up in North Brooklyn is gonna do a lot of damage to all the BIDs in New York City 'cause they, like I said, it's on camera. They was at a movie theater inside the White Hotel, and the person that's gonna be, that's gonna be on the board, or hope mostly gonna be the Chair of the Board, Kenny, um, Katie Denny Horowitz, mentioned that, "Well, there's no need of, um, BIDs. We just wanna collect money from business owners." On camera, I recorded it. It's at the White Hotel with Lincoln, Linky, Linky Wrestler, and Emily Gallagher was there. So I'm gonna conclude right now. Linky Wrestler, Linky Wrestler and Emily Gallagher was there, and Ca- and Ca- um, Kristen Gonzalez was there. Like I said, they said that there's no need for Brook, North Brooklyn BID, but we just here to collect money from business owners. So I know, like I said, I'll, I'm not, I would never disparage any other BID because I don't really know them, and I know they do, I have a big, I know they doing the right thing for their BIDs in the communities that they serve, but this one that they trying to cook up in North Brooklyn, which serves Greenpoint and Williamsburg. Wait, wait, it's under Linky Wrestler, under Emily Gall- wait, wait, Emily Gallagher, Emily Gallagher and Kristen Gonzalez and, and General Gutierrez, because they all scared of her.
All right, thank you so much.
We need to stop this. I'm going. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you very much. Thank you all. And then I will turn to our Zoom panelists. I believe that we have, we'll go in, in this order. Justin Lerner, Alyssa Tucker, Marshall Strawbridge, Elizabeth Lovejoy, and Pedro Suarez. So to begin with, if we have Justin?
You may begin.
Hi, my name is Justin Lerner from the Light Plains, Executive Director of the Light Plains Road Bid. My experience with, uh, Small Business Services has been overall very positive. They've helped us throughout COVID. I don't know if it was an official grant or whatever, but they definitely provided a lot of face masks and, and Purell and had a lot of guidelines to help keep our storefronts open. So I don't want that to go oversighted because they really did help us through, through a very dark time. In regards to the grants and, and the funding that was being discussed, I do agree that they, they do have a lot of open grants that we can take advantage of. But I also do agree that somehow, since our budget couldn't really afford for the, um, I guess reimbursements, finding a different way of working on those grants. And I think that we, they have been working on that, and SBS might be looking to fund a grant for us where they would hire somebody directly where we wouldn't have to come out of pocket for that. So I'm not sure, the last time that's been updated, I think we spoke to them last year on that. But I think that they might be working on that, so I hope that they are. And we look forward to working on that grant and planning that study with them. I'm done.
All right, short and sweet. Thank you very much. Next up, we'll have Alyssa Tucker.
You may begin.
I'm Alyssa Tucker. I am testifying as Executive Director of the Belmont Bid. I congratulate Councilmember Felice on his appointment as Chair of this important committee and congratulate all the council members for their new terms. The Belmont Bid works to advance the economic well-being of local businesses in the community at large. We work daily to support and promote our small businesses and help keep our neighborhood clean and safe through our supplemental services. SBS helps build thriving neighborhoods in abundance of ways, most notably by supporting bids and small businesses, and we are appreciative of the work they do daily. We are especially supportive or thankful for your advocacy and support surrounding the additional funding for small bids, of which we are. In fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four, funding from the Small Bid Grant enabled us to expand on our critical services and broaden our initiatives. If this program were to be baseline, it would create more certainty for small bids and allow us to strategically plan to use the funding for the most important needs of our districts. It's challenging to introduce new projects or expand operations, even with additional funding, due to limited staff. If SBS were to introduce a new multi-year grant specifically for additional staffing, I believe it would significantly help bids better serve our districts. While we are grateful and commend SBS for their work, it has been challenging contracting with the city due to timely contract registrations. We believe SBS should offer more grants directly to small businesses as well, things like on store, and storefront improvements, equipment, and safety upgrades. The Belmont Bid also respectfully requests SBS review the Bid Trends Report. Just as our neighborhoods are unique, our bids are too, and what is needed in one district doesn't necessarily mean it's needed in another. A similar budget doesn't mean similar needs. We question its value, particularly after it was used to provide data for Comptroller Lander's analysis of the financial and operations practices.
Thank you, time expired.
I'm sorry?
Time has expired. Thank you.
I can't tell if this is on. There we go. All right, thank you very much. And we will be sure to look at the full written statement as well. Next, we'll, I will call Marshall Strawbridge.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, thank you. My name is Marshall Strawbridge. I'm the Director of Small Business and Community Outreach at the Bronx Economic Development Corporation. We are the, as the economic development agency for the Bronx Borough President, I represent the Borough President on each of the twelve business improvement districts here in the Bronx. To avoid going over time and reiterating things that have been shared before, I just wanna second a lot of stuff that has been said about the, uh, the grant-making operation at SBS and how the reimbursement-to-invoice system places a financial strain on a lot of our smaller bids. The Bronx has a majority of bids that operate under five hundred thousand dollars, so they depend on the grants that SBS provides. I also want to emphasize the role that SBS plays in providing technical support to its executive directors. Many of our executive directors operate as the sole employees of the, their organizations. And so that places a lot of responsibility on their, on them as, as the directors there. And so one of the initiatives that SBS and Bronx CDC alongside the Bronx Borough President have, have launched recently is the Bronx Bid Leadership Support Initiative, where Bronx CDC is providing technical support along with additional resources to bids thanks to a grant from SBS. This is an initiative that's still in its infancy, but it's something that we are excited about and have gotten positive feedback from by both SBS and the bid directors themselves. I think it's something that we should emphasize as being a priority to continue in future years, both in the Bronx and expand it to other boroughs. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And then, uh, next up, we have Elizabeth Lovejoy.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Felice and members of the New York City Council Committee on Small Business. My name is Elizabeth Lovejoy, and I am testifying today as Executive Director of the Bay Ridge Fifth Avenue Business Improvement District in Brooklyn. The Bay Ridge Fifth Avenue Business Improvement District represents three hundred-plus businesses ranging from diverse restaurants and retail establishments. Our mission is to be a partner to local property owners, merchants, residents, elected officials, and community organizations to improve neighborhood conditions that promote economic and cultural vitality of the commercial corridor. We applaud Mayor Adams and the Department of Small Business Services advocacy to renew additional funding for small bids and look forward to continued funding in fiscal year twenty-five. As a small bid operating within a fixed budget and bolstered by additional grant funds, the Bay Ridge Fifth Avenue Bid is evolving with innovative ideas and initiatives. Nevertheless, the challenge of illegal dumping persists along the commercial corridor to find any remedy solely through increased funding for supplemental sanitation. We respectfully implore the New York City Council to work with the Department of Sanitation to intensify litter basket pickups and/or enact regulations specifically designated to deter illegal disposal. Moreover, in our endeavor to cultivate an inclusive and welcoming district, we adorn it with holiday lighting during both the Christmas and Ramadan seasons. Given the rising costs involved, we pursue discretionary funding to ensure continued installations in the upcoming fiscal year. However, the acquisition of such funds entails a cumbersome process, and we earnestly hope for strides to streamline bureaucratic procedures and minimize unnecessary delays. We eagerly anticipate advancing our crucial initiatives with your invaluable support. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And then I believe we have Pedro Suarez.
You may begin.
Yes, I'm here. I'm not able to turn on my camera for some reason. Says the host has stopped it. All right. There we go. Apologies. Good afternoon, Chair Felice and members of the New York City Council Committee on Small Business. My name is Pedro Suarez, and I'm testifying today as Executive Director of the Third Avenue Business Improvement District in the Bronx. Uh, the bid covers the commercial area between East One Hundred and Forty-Eighth Street and East One Hundred and Fifty-Third Street, primarily along Third Avenue in the Bronx. Our mission has always been to support small businesses, keep our neighborhoods clean and safe, and bring prosperity to our communities. We are proud, we are proud to be the first and oldest of our kind in the Bronx, serving the growing South Bronx community since nineteen eighty-eight. The Third Avenue Bid covers an eight-block-facing area, which includes over two hundred commercial tenants. Bids interact with several of the divisions within SBS, including Business Services and the Office of Nightlife. We work most closely with the Neighborhood Development Division. This team, led by Deputy Commissioner Calvin Brown, is tasked with bid oversight, creating capacity-building opportunities for community-based organizations and developing, and the development and management of grant programs that deliver critical resources for bids. I'm very grateful for the partnership with Mayor Adams, SBS Commissioner Kim, and the City Council in recent years in particular, thanking everyone for their advocacy and support of additional funding for smaller bids like myself through the Small Bid Grant to deliver critical services. One thing that I wanted to add and mention is that bids, you know, in many parts of the city face unique challenges, particularly in the South Bronx. Our bid is located within the center of the opioid epidemic and crisis. And so that adds an additional labor, layer of complexity to the, the issues that we're trying to address. And I would also add that the assessments that are delivered to bids don't all often reflect the volume of, of visitors that we receive. The Third Avenue Bid is the second-most heavily-trafficked bid in the entire city, second only to Times Square. So that's something that I would like folks to keep in mind as they think about the different supports that are needed for the smaller bids that we often face, again, high-volume.
Time has expired.
Traffic. Thank you so much for your time today.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you to all our panelists in person and on Zoom. Are there, is there anyone else that I may have missed in the room or on Zoom? Great. In that case, I will turn it back over to Chair Felice for closing remarks.
All right, thank you so much to everyone who joined us today. Thank you to everyone who testified. Our small businesses are really important parts of our city, and of course, our bids do crucial work in terms of helping our small businesses survive, thrive, and expand and do the great work that they do in our city. So we look very forward to working with all, including our bids, Small Business Services, and all the different agencies to make sure we're continuing to improve life for our small businesses in the city of New York. I wanna thank everybody who testified, and with that said, today's hearing is hereby adjourned. Thank you so much.